Ladies and gentlemen, I'd like to call the May twenty-second meeting of the governing body to order. Madam Clerk, would you take role?
Mr. Escobell.
Here.
Mr. Johnson.
Present.
Mr. Laborne. Renny. Mr. Royville.
Present.
Mr. Seagrave.
Present.
Mr. White.
Present.
Dr. Aldridge.
Present.
Mayor Collins.
Here.
Mr. Cook. One member is absent mayor, we do have a quorum.
Would it last to ask the mayor's youth council if they would lead us in the pledge of allegiance?
Next item is number four, expression of appreciation of the twenty-twenty-two to twenty-twenty-three mayor's youth council and state of the youth address.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Devon Pies. I'm the mayor's youth council staff advisor this year. Um, in addition to my counterpart Stacy Becker, I would, tonight I would like to recognize our twenty-first mayor's youth council participants. I would like to invite Elizabeth Stump, our chairperson, up to the podium to give the state of the youth address. Hello, my name is Elizabeth Stump, and I am the chair of the Cheyenne Mayor's Youth Council. I've been a member of the youth council for the past four years. First off, I would like to thank the sponsor of mayor's youth council Devon Pies for all of her guidance and contributions to the council. Secondly, I would like to thank Stacy Becker for all of her efforts. Both of them have helped to make this year go incredibly well. Also, I am grateful for the council's executive team, Kristen and Maddie Huffman, for all of their support. And finally, I'd like to thank the mayor's youth council as a whole for all of their passion, excitement, and flexibility this year. I have genuinely enjoyed getting to know each and every one of you better. We first started off our year with team building activities, including a ropes course. Then we organized a holiday extravaganza activity for families at the Cheyenne Children's Village. Next, we got to see the water treatment plant along with the public safety building on a day off from school. We ended the year with volunteering at the youth day of giving event and with our capstone project, which was a third iteration of the downtown runaround scavenger hunt. However, that is not all that we did this year. We also spoke with many notable members of Cheyenne city government, such as Dr. Aldridge and Jason Sanchez, among many others. I know something that all of the members of the youth council look forward to. Every meeting was talking with the mayor and the updates on the city that he always had. Whether it be a new restaurant coming to town or a proposed development, we were always very intrigued by what he had to say. I think that I speak for the whole mayor's youth council when I say thank you to the mayor for being so engaged with our group this year. And because of my time on the mayor's youth council, I have learned invaluable lessons about the importance of being an involved citizen and engaging with my community. I have made lasting friendships with students from across the city. And the experience of being on the council for all four years of high school has been invaluable in numerous ways. In the end, I know that I am very excited for the future of the Cheyenne Mayor's Youth Council. And I also know that those who are a part of it will go on to accomplish great things in part because of the lessons that they have learned from the youth council. Thank you. Thank you, Elizabeth. Mayor Collins, if you'd please join us at the front. Now we will be presenting the recognition awards for this year's twenty-twenty-two, twenty-three mayor's youth council participants. First of all, I would like to say thank you to all the parents on behalf of the city and myself. It's been a privilege working with your students. I would also like to say thank you to this year's mayor's youth council for making this year, as the mayor's youth council staff advisor, a memorable one. This was a fantastic and outstanding group of young individuals. You made it a fun year. Thank you all for making this a great one. I will now recognize the mayor's youth council participants. Anna Alicia. Anna is in eleventh grade, is in eleventh grade at South High School. This was her first year in mayor's youth council. Anna participates in South Cheer and is a participant of the South Multicultural Club. Also, Anna also just competed in Miss Teen Wyoming. Ty Bronder. Ty is an eleventh grade student at East High. This is his third year in mayor's youth council. Ty has done extensive volunteer work with Friday Food Bags, Kamea, assisted in the annual bike rodeo. Ty is active in the IB program, AFJR OTC, races on a local mountain bike team. He's on the swim team, shoots and shows dogs, dogs for 4H. Kayden Davenport. Kayden is in eleventh grade at South High School. This was his first year in mayor's youth council. Kayden participates in South Cheer, National Honor Society, and South Leadership. I know, I'll give it back. Caitlin Ganscom. Caitlin is in tenth grade at South High School. This is her second year in mayor's youth council. Caitlin is active in basketball, SBLA, marching band, and 4H. Heidi Glaze. Heidi is in eleventh grade at South High School. This was also her first year in mayor's youth council. Heidi participates in South volleyball, is in Student Senate, and participates in South Leadership. She also maintains a job at the trampoline park. Naveya Green. Naveya is in eleventh grade and is homeschooled. This year is her third year in mayor's youth council. Naveya is an active, is active in the South High Soccer Team. She plays for Cheyenne, a Cheyenne Soccer traveling team. Naveya is also part of a summer ministry program called Youth in Action. She volunteers as a Sunday school teacher. Kristen Huffman. Kristen is in eleventh grade at Central High. This was her first year in mayor's youth council. Kristen was elected by her peers as a second vice chair. Kristen is active in key club, tennis, and orchestra. She has done extensive volunteer work at the Children's Village and Botanic Gardens, build Friday food bags, and has a passion for adaptive tennis. Andrew Lance. Andrew is in tenth grade at Central High School. This is his second year in mayor's youth council. In addition to participating in mayor's youth council, Andrew is also a member of the Central Tennis Team, plays piano, participates in French Club, marching band, and is part of the French Nationals Honor Society. Molly Madsen. Molly is in tenth grade at East High. This is her second year in mayor's youth council. Molly is an act, is active in cross-country, indoor and outdoor track, and is part of the East Wild West Team. She has additionally helped raise ten thousand dollars for the Empowering Youth, which is a charity in Cambodia. Lastly, I would like to recognize our seniors. William Barrington. Will is a senior at Central High School, and this is his second year in mayor's youth council. He's active in cross-country, both indoor and outdoor track, Keystone Club. He is named Military Youth of the Year, and he also received the Red Cross Hero Award. Julian Beach. Julian is a senior at Central High School, and this is her second year in mayor's youth council. Julian is an avid reader and is planning to either attend LCCC or the University of Wyoming. Caitlin Cobb. Katie is a senior at Central and will be attending Texas A&amp;M to study aerospace engineering. This was Katie's first year in mayor's youth council. She has done extensive volunteer work at the library and with the Old City Children's Chorus. Um, Katie is additionally on Central's golf team. Nora Fraley. Nora is a senior at Central High School. Next fall she will be attending Michigan State. She has done extended, extensive volunteer work with the Beast Foundation and Boys and Girls Club. She's active in Central's Physics Club and has pursued her bronze congressional medal. Maddie Huffman. Maddie is a senior at Central. This is her first year in mayor's youth council. She was elected by her peers to be the first vice chair. Maddie is active in key club, orchestra, soccer, National Honor Society, and Spanish National Honor Society. She has done extensive volunteer work at Cheyenne Botanic Gardens, Children's Village, assistant top soccer, and teaching adaptive tennis. Maddie will be attending the University of Wyoming, majoring in communications and minoring in Spanish and honors college. Elizabeth Stump. I would like to recognize our chairwoman. She is a senior at Central High School, serving her fourth year in mayor's youth council. She's active on Central's dance team, does figure skating, key club, National Honor Society, and French National Honor Society. Elizabeth will be attending Washington University at St. Louis this fall. Again, thank you, mayor's youth council for all of your hard work. Bless them.
You guys. Welcome to stay. One of the requirements of the mayor's youth councils, a couple of them have to come to every city council meeting, so I think they've had enough of us for a while, so.
Next item here is number five, consent agenda. All agenda items listed with the designation of CA are considered to be routine items by the governing body and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion on these items unless a member of the governing body so requests and support by two other members is received. Any item removed from the consent agenda will be considered in its normal sequence on the agenda.
All right, is there any items a member of this governing body would like to remove from the consent agenda? Hearing none, I would entertain a motion.
Go move.
Second, Mr. Royville made the motion, and Mr. Escobell seconded the motion. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the consent agenda is approved.
Next item is number seven, ordinance second reading, appropriating monies for the city of Cheyenne, Wyoming for the various purposes in conducting the municipal government of said city and fixing the amount of general and set and special taxes as part of the revenue required to meet the set appropriation for the fiscal year beginning July first, twenty-twenty-three, and ending June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-four.
Well, this is our first vote on the, uh, on the budget as a governing body. We still have a couple more weeks of this process to go. Is there anybody here in the audience who want to speak to this governing body about the budget? Hearing none, President Johnson.
Okay, first of all, sir, just so everyone is aware that there will be four amendments that came through the committee of hold. Mr. Mayor, the recommendation of the committee of hold is to approve on second reading, and I so move.
Seconded by Mr. Seagrave.
Mr. Mayor, I move to amend to decrease the capital improvement expenses line item in the mayor's department general fund expenditure by one hundred and five thousand dollars and increase the capital improvement expenses line item in the miscellaneous department's general fund expenditure budget by the same amount. Sorry, Jennifer, and to, sorry, subtext.
You're okay.
And to increase the special distribution from the state line item in the intergovernmental general fund revenue category by twenty-three thousand dollars and the capital improvement expensive line item in the miscellaneous department's general fund expenditure budget by the same amount.
That will take a second.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Royville? Okay. We'll go out to the audience on this amendment. Basically, what this does is we reallocated a hundred and twenty-eight thousand dollars to provide a health and safety exhaust system to keep vehicle exhaust out of our bays for our firefighters. Is there anybody here would like to speak to that? Hearing none, about from the governing body? Hearing none, all those in favor of this amendment, please signify by saying aye.
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 The amendment is passed, and we're back on the main motion. President.
Sorry, go.
Mr. President.
Mr. Mayor, I move to amend to increase the special distribution from the state line item in the intergovernmental general fund revenue category by fifty thousand dollars and increase the nuisance abatement line item in the compliance department's general fund expenditure budget in the same amount.
Seconded by Dr. Rennie. In this case, we're just adding fifty thousand dollars so that our nuisance department has more money to help take care of problems within the community? Is there anybody here that'd like to speak to that? Hearing none, about from the governing body? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The amendment is approved, and we're back on the main motion. Mr. President.
Mr. Mayor, I move to amend to increase the special distribution from the state line item in the intergovernmental general fund revenue category by one hundred twenty-seven thousand, two hundred and eighty dollars and increase parks projects line item in the miscellaneous department's general fund expenditure budget in the same amount.
Seconded by Mr. Seagrave. And for the audience, this is to add a hundred and twenty-seven thousand dollars that the Parks Department can use to fix potholes and problems we have in our parking lots throughout the city. Uh, for the parks, parking lots. Anybody here would like to speak to that? All right, hearing none, how about from the governing body? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, this amendment is also approved, and we're back on the main motion. Mr. President.
Yeah, very good. So this one's a little more complex because it did have an amendment to an amendment. So the first amendment, um, I will read into the record, and then do you want me to continue on with the amendment to the amendment?
Okay.
Are you okay with that, Chris? Or how do you want it to proceed?
I think so.
Mr. Mayor, through you, if, if you want to allow for a separate. Yes, you, I'm sorry.
Yeah, let's do that.
Correct.
Very good. Mr. Mayor, I move to amend to decrease the miscellaneous department transfer to reserves line item by sixty thousand dollars and increase the city council department as follows, twenty thousand dollars in Ward One contingency line item, twenty thousand in Ward Two contingency line item, and twenty thousand in Ward Three contingency line item.
Do you want to make your amendment to the amendment?
Okay, I'm, I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor, let me clarify. Um, you'll need a second to that motion.
That's right. Mr. Laborne made the second.
Very good, and the amendment to the amendment
Please.
was to increase transfer to reserves line item by one hundred twenty-four thousand, four hundred and forty-five dollars for a total of one hundred eighty-four thousand, four hundred and forty-five dollars and increase the city council department as follows. Forty-one thousand, four hundred eighty-five dollars in Ward One contingency line item, forty-one thousand, four hundred eighty-five dollars in Ward Two contingency line item, and forty-one thousand, four hundred eight, four hundred eighty-five dollars in Ward Three contingency line item for a total in each ward contingency fund of sixty-one thousand, four hundred and eighty-five dollars.
Seconded by Mr. Laborne. All that means is that we're adding or creating a council contingency fund uh, for special projects within each of the three wards in the amount of sixty-one thousand, four hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars per ward. Um, is there any comments from the audience on this? Hearing none, how about from the governing body?
Yes, sir, when you're ready. Um, so on the, because I wanted to read it into this and because of the increase on the amendment on the amendment uh, for the full sixty-one thousand, four hundred and eighty-five dollars to go into each ward contingency. Um, what I've been dealing with as president lately is in regards to conventions and conferences. And so I really didn't support this, you know, as far as a full transfer over to Ward Contingency Funds because city council generally does not have expenditures for conventions and conferences that we wish to go to. And so I thought when this was, would have been presented, following the first amendment for the sixty thousand dollars, it, it would have been divided up to add something to the city council uh, budget in order to cover some of those conferences and conventions expenses, which could not be met under the current budget. And so in that case, um, on the amendment to the amendment, I will be voting no.
Mr. Laborne.
Well, Mr. Mayor, I, I certainly recognize what the president of the council is saying here. Um, that is an important element, uh, that, uh, perhaps we'll deal with at some reappropriation or some later date. It is, uh, definitely something that, uh, we have a lot of education issues in every department. And those of us on the council don't know it all. And we can certainly benefit from education and conferences, but I speak in favor of the amendment to the amendment because of the needs in Ward One. And we've identified some needs already that are significant, that are important, that we deal with in an expedited manner. Uh, I'm particularly referring to an area that is on city property between Johnson Junior High and going school where there recently was a tragic death uh, with a young man who was mistakenly spinning donuts in an area that shouldn't have been there. And so a fence for that purpose is something we is under discussion right now. We have a number of projects in South Cheyenne where we can work with the neighborhood group to, uh, make a difference. And so it certainly is a, a, a jump, bringing back a contingency matter that was, uh, done away with during, uh, tight budgets and difficult times. But, uh, and I can't really speak to the other wards, that's up to those individuals. But I would point out that anything we do will have to be in agreement with all three members of that ward and that we have, uh, extensive needs in Ward One that, uh, we're ready to work on right now. So I hope we just proceed with this, and certainly, again, I agree with, uh, President Johnson. There is a need for that, uh, council matter, but I don't think that's what's before us now. Thank you.
Any other comments on the amendment to the amendment?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
We do have Dr. Aldridge with her hand raised.
Okay, whatever, Mr. Escobell first, Mr. Escobell.
Um, Mr. Mayor, through you, as well in Ward Three, uh, we do have many needs. Uh, and just a week ago tonight, I had spoken with the mayor and, uh, our director of Parks and Rec about a tragedy that was averted in one of our, uh, facilities and one of our local softball fields. And when it comes to protecting lives and we want something done immediately to, um, prevent tragedies in our wards. Can't put a price tag on things like that. This was a two-year-old and, uh, he was in, he was just out having fun with his family. And, uh, so I feel strongly about it now, uh, even more so after talking with others constituents in my ward that we get a price spent twice that amount of money just in the past week, so. On and for the amendment up to the amendment.
Dr. Aldridge.
Thank you, Mayor Collins. Uh, I'm speaking on behalf of the amendment for the amendment. Um, I agree with, um, my colleague in Ward Three, uh, Councilman Escobell, and also with Councilman Laborne from Ward One. Ward One is not unique in that it has, um, projects that need to be completed. Um, the cost of those projects, I just don't think we would be able to, um, do on uh, what the original amount was that was proposed with the increased in cost and expenses for materials and supplies and, um, labor. So, um, I'm speaking in support and support of the amendment to the amendment. Thank you.
Anybody else in the governing body? All right, we're on the amendment to the amendment, adding basically, uh, a little over forty thousand dollars per ward. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Let me see. Those opposed? Can you see the hands and the nose? All right, so it's four to four. Um, that item fails.
Mr. Mayor, can I have a clarification on the no votes, please?
Looks to me like it's, uh, Mr. Seagrave, uh, Mr. Royville, Dr. Rennie, and President Johnson.
Thank you.
And I'm not voting, it's Ward Contingency. I don't feel like I should vote. All right, we're back on the, uh, the amendment, the sixty thousand dollars, I believe it is to, uh...
The original amendment is, uh, yes, as amended, as amended.
Yep, so we're back on that, uh, the amendment. All right, further comments on the, uh, the amendment?
Yes, sir.
Mr. President.
Okay, so this one I actually do support, and, uh, I may channel my inner Councilman Shaner on this in regards to how we, um, navigated things like the splash pad where he kind of put it into perspective that if there was community buy-in to, um, raise funds to actually make a project succeed, that I've, I know in the past I've used, um, the Ward Three, uh, contingency fund to, uh, put extensions on fences around the ballfields at Brimmer Park, which was, um, seconded and approved by not only Councilman Luna and Councilman Brown at the time, but myself and the rest of the council. I've also worked with Ward One in regards to when we, um, and that was on the front end to take care of the initial cost is like seed money, and then the treasurer at the time was able to, um, find additional funds uh, to make that project in Brimmer Park succeed. In the Ward One part, we needed to, uh, finish up a project with the Carco's Fire Bill, um, in order to do the archway. And so on that one, we had raised, um, several thousand dollars to make that happen. Um, but we were just like about a thousand dollars short, and so I worked with the Ward One council members at that time who are actually still present, Councilman Labor, Councilman Royville, and Councilman White, to actually fulfill the project so we could see it to its completion. But I think this actually has, um, you know, a motive to actually use this as either seed or the backend to make these projects succeed with a lot more, like, community involvement. So in this case, I support this amendment.
Mr. Laborne.
Thank you. Well, President Johnson, I distinctly remember the splash pad and how we worked together to make that happen. I remember the other projects that you brought up and how community involvement helped them happen. But I want to remind the members that just voted against the increase how we really don't have continuing source of funds that is meaningful enough to do it. And there are going to be projects that we would like to do, that I would like to do with the neighborhood groups. Very similar to what, uh, was just mentioned. But it seems like that isn't, uh, as important to some people as it is to some of us. Some of us who diligently work with those neighborhood groups. That twenty thousand dollars as opposed to sixty thousand dollars is going to mean that the very things that were just mentioned that are certainly important to some people, maybe not to everyone, are not going to happen. Thank you.
Other comments? Okay, we're on the amendment, all those in favor.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I'm sorry, Dr. Aldridge does have her hand raised.
Thank you, ma'am, appreciate it. Dr. Aldridge.
Um, Mayor Collins, through you, I just, uh, would like to, uh, note, I, I guess I'm, I'm severely disappointed that, um, you know, twenty thousand dollars, while it may be a small amount and it may, uh, be used to seed money or to supplement what can be raised in the community. I just believe that what we're, we've now put ourselves in a situation of putting out, um, perhaps uh, expectations that we won't be able to meet in our wards with just twenty thousand dollars. Um, I think while a splash pad, um, is probably something that, uh, might be a little bit easier to raise money for, raising money to put, um, concrete underneath a bridge is probably not going to be as easy to raise money for. Um, perhaps taking care of some of the, um, issues that tend to be, uh, less noticeable and less fun and less exciting, um, still need to be taken care of. And I think that what we've done now is set ourselves up for our constituents to have expectations that we would be able to address things in each of our wards, and twenty thousand dollars isn't going to be sufficient. Um, and it may be on, for projects that are not easy to or popular to raise funds for or to, um, seek support for. Um, with the idea that, um, this, I, I just don't believe twenty thousand dollars, quite honestly, is worth the hassle for this. So I'll be voting no tonight on the main motion.
All right, any other comments? All right, any other comments from the governing body?
Mr. Mayor.
Escabel.
You know, voting no, just to vote no without giving a really a very valid reason. It, you know, that's disappointing to me on those no votes today. I don't know, Dr. Aldridge, would change your mind because even if we still have the contingency fund, we'll still have the ability to add more funds later if there are projects that the governing body may deem as being valid and reasonable to fund. So I think that keeping the twenty thousand dollars in there at least is a good start. And hopefully I'll have an opportunity to talk to the members that voted no a little bit more about what we're trying to accomplish in some of the incidents that happened in Ward three last week.
Dr. Rennie.
Mr. Mayor, those of us that voted no tonight spoke out, the committee, the whole last week and explained why we voted no then. And those, I think, arguments still continue tonight. I think in my case, I wanted, I just thought the money should go back into reserves. I wasn't willing to triple more than triple what we'd had in contingency funds for each board. So I'm sorry, my colleagues weren't listening last week, but I explained my vote last week. And so did two of the other members that voted no, and I think their rationale probably still applies this week as well.
And here the comments on the amendment.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Royble.
Excuse me, my spit up. The original thought process of mine was we had almost three hundred thousand dollars from that pool from we spent last on the amendments. And that's what I was kind of thinking, that we should have taken the Ward contingency money out of. The, it's a different pool now. It's the money that's been given back to us from different departments. I can support the twenty thousand. I think that if we run into a program or a process where we need more, we can sit down. There's still going to be a hundred, a hundred and four thousand dollars sitting in that pool.
Mr. Mayor, are you talking about the one-time money?
Yeah.
That's totally allocated now.
Okay, but I'm talking about the money that we're looking at right now for Ward contingency.
Right, correct.
So it'll be about a hundred and twenty left and a hundred and two left in there, a hundred and four?
Yeah.
At that point, I think if we need, want or desire, we can come back and revisit this. But for years, we had twenty thousand. Some awards didn't spend it, some awards spent it all. I think that this is the first year we're doing it in probably ten years. But it's, I think it's just let's start and see what it covers. And if it covers everything, great. If it doesn't cover everything, we still have a pool of money to go back on. Thank you.
All right, we're still on the amendment. If I have my notes correct here, any other comments on the amendment? All right, hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Those opposed?
No.
All right, Dr. Aldridge is a no. That amendment is passed. We're now back on the main motion, which is the full budget. Comments from members of the governing body on the budget? All right, hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The budget is approved on second reading as amended.
Next item is number eight, ordinance on second reading, approving and establishing revised water and sewer rates, tap and system development fees, administrative fees, service charges and penalties, and septic and commercial waste dump rates as recommended by the Board of Public Utilities.
All right, we have before us today the annual adjustment to water and sewer rates. Is there anybody in the audience like to speak to this ordinance before us? Mr. Brooks, welcome.
Thank you. Mr. President, Mr. Mayor, City Council members Brad Brooks, Director for City of Cheyenne Board of Public Utilities. What you have before you today is our annual review and analysis of our rates and fees for fiscal year 2024. These rates and fees that we're looking at would not go into effect until January first of next year. We, if you recall, two years ago actually hired on FCS was our rate consultant. And we've kept him on for the next five years to annually go back and look each year where we at for our rates, fees, what expenses we're having, what the economy is doing. If you recall, last year, I think we requested a five and five percent, five on the water, five on the sewer. We were hoping to do that this year, but with everything that's gone on with our economy and the increases we're seeing, the costs we're seeing in our construction projects and even just in cost of our operating our facilities of increases. We have decided that we would recommend, and our FCS recommends it as well as does our board, a eight percent for the water and a ten percent for the sewer. I'm gonna turn it over to Brad Bowen, who's here with me. Brad Bowen's our admin manager. He's going to give a little more detail and then we'll both be available if you have any questions.
Mr. Bond.
Brad Bowen, Administration Manager, Cheyenne Board of Public Utilities, Mayor Collins, President Johnson, the rest of the city council. The increases that are before you, the eight percent, the ten percent are based after we reviewed all our current construction projects, our construction needs with FCS to determine the long-term costs that are in front of us and also our current operating costs. Included in our current operating costs, eighty-six percent of our budget is made up between salaries, contractual costs, utilities, and chemicals and plant operations. And in those categories, we've seen significant cost increases over the last year, including a thirty-seven percent increase in our chemical costs, proposed utility costs between seven percent and twenty percent, depending on the utility, and just our overall maintenance costs have been up at least ten percent. And that is after looking at the cost of living indexes for Wyoming, which have been over ten percent in the last year. We are happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Bond. Any questions from the governing body?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Escabel.
Through you. Brad, can you reiterate what we talked about in finance about how many miles of clay pipe we still have in our sewer systems and how much more lead pipes in? Yep.
Yes, Mr. President, Mayor, through you to Councilman Escabel. We have about a hundred and forty miles still of clay, miterified clay pipe. Now, that being said, some clay pipe is still as good as the day it was put in. But it all depends on how it was constructed, how it was bedded. But unfortunately with clay pipe, our big issue with that is it settles, cracks over time, and it's really affected by root intrusion. So typically it's in our older neighborhoods. And of course, in our older neighborhoods, we typically have a lot more trees and those trees find their way to those sewers and do quite a bit of damage on them.
And then how about the lead pipe?
Lead pipe, we figured out we had about how many services? Six to eight hundred services that we'll be looking at. Actually, we're doing a lead tap analysis where we're actually digging and potholing up those in areas of town that we're aware of. And so our plan will be that we'll go in and do replacement on those in the areas of town. We know by the date of service, I think it's nineteen thirty-six, that any typically prior to that date, they're subject to have led, the possibility of having lead services.
Mr. Mayor, just my follow-up comment was that, you know, it reiterates why the city is in a position we're in for raising rates and what we're facing for the future with infrastructure. And, you know, water is just, you don't have water, you don't have anything. So it's an important issue and, you know, I'm gonna always be supportive of these projects. And, you know, hopefully we don't have to raise rates at a higher percentage going forward. But, you know, and looking at it, this budget yearly is certainly one of the things that as a council, we really have to keep a close eye on.
Thank you. Anybody else in the governing body? All right, anybody else in the audience want to speak to the increased sewer and water rates going forward? All right, hearing none. Mr. White.
Mr. Mayor, the recommendation of the Finance Committee is to approve on second reading, and I would so move.
Second, seconded by Mr. Escabel. Comments for members of the governing body? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ordinance is approved on second reading.
Next item is number nine, ordinance on second reading, amending the official zoning map of the City of Cheyenne, changing the zoning classification from MR, medium density residential, to MUB, mixed-use business emphasis for land located at Lot twenty-nine, Block one, East Ridge.
All right, is there anybody in the audience want to speak to this zone change from MR to MUB?
Mr. Mayor, we have Mr. Shane Hansen online with his hand raised.
Let's ask him. Mr. Hanson, welcome. Mr. Hanson?
Hello, can you hear me?
We can now, sir. Thank you.
Okay. Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. Shane Hanson, Style Surveying Services, agent for the owner. The client's requesting a zone change for the property, excuse me, at Lot twenty-nine, Block one, East Ridge, from MR to MUB. They also own lots thirty and thirty-one, Block one, East Ridge, which are currently zoned MUB. And our client would like to have their properties match up to reflect the same zoning. Our client owns Frontier Access and Mobility. Their intent for the property is to use it for a rental office for a handicap accessible vehicle rental service. And with that, I'll take any questions you may have.
Thank you, Mr. Hanson. Does anybody have any questions of the applicant? Thanks, Shane. How about any? Oh, I'm sorry, Dr. Rennie.
So to through you to Mr. Hanson. So if it's a vehicle rental service, are they intending on storing the vehicles in the, in the parking lot immediately to the east of this property?
Mr. Hanson?
Dr. Rennie, excuse me, Mayor, through you, Dr. Rennie, yes, that's correct. That is, that's going to be where they have their vehicles. I'm not sure how many they're going to have. The house would be the office and they would park whatever rentals they have on that park, on that parking lot that they own.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Anybody else? Anybody else in the audience? All right, Dr. Rennie, we have a motion, please.
The recommendation of the Public Service Committee is to approve on second reading, and I would so move.
Seconded by Mr. Seagrave. Comments for members of the governing body?
Mr. Mayor, I was just asked where this was located and it's the house, there's a on the northwest corner of the roundabout there, there is a parking lot. And then this house is immediately to on the west side of the parking lot. The parking lot oftentimes, I know, I drove past there today and it had two food trucks in it. So if that helps my colleagues understand where it's at, that's the explanation.
Mr. Seagrave.
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor. During committee, we did ask if there was any concerns by the neighbors and apparently several did express some interest, maybe concern at the not the Board of Adjustments, I'm sorry.
The Planning Commission?
Planning Commission, thank you. But they did not come to the Public Service Committee and obviously they did not come tonight. So I'm hoping that they got their answers and are comfortable with this. So just a little background. Thank you.
Anybody else in the governing body? All right, motion before us is a zone change. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The zone change is approved on second reading.
Next item is number ten, ordinance on second reading, amending the major street plan official map 2017 by updating the entire major street plan official map with newly plotted and built roads and with the most recent master transportation plan, Connect 2045, and other recently adopted master transportation amendments.
All right, is there anybody in the audience like to speak to our master map for our road system? Hearing none. Dr. Rennie.
Mr. Mayor, the recommendation of the Public Service Committee is to approve on second reading, and I would so move.
Seconded by Mr. Seagrave. Comments for members of the governing body? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The official map is approved on second reading.
Next item is number eleven, an ordinance on first reading, amending section five point one two point zero three zero licenses and permits types of chapter five point one two alcoholic liquor and malt beverages of Title V business licenses and regulations of the Municipal Code of the City of Cheyenne, Wyoming.
Let's send this one to the Finance Committee.
Next item is number twelve, ordinance on first reading, creating chapter two point nine six, ethical obligations of the public officials, public members and city employees of Title II, administration and personnel of the Municipal Code of the City of Cheyenne, Wyoming, specifying the ethical duties and obligations of public officials, public members and employees of the City of Cheyenne.
We'll send this one to the Public Services Committee.
Next item is number nineteen, resolution approving sanitary sewer service by outside user agreement for Myers Austin et al. for the property at thirty-seven thirty Rollin Street, Laramie County, Wyoming, located northwest of the intersection of Rollin Street and McCann Avenue.
All right, before I sign this, I want to kind of explain what's going on, okay? We have a, a home in a county pocket, a hundred percent, well, mostly surrounded by the city. This was a county pocket that was subdivided and the house is on one side and there's some stuff on the other side. Well, it found out that the septic system was on the other person's property. So when they, when they tore that up, now we have a family that can't use their bathrooms and take showers and things like that. So we have a very much an emergency situation that we would like to rectify. And to do a annexation would take a series of meetings and weeks or months in order to get it approved. So the only way we really could think of to give them immediate humanitarian relief is to do an emergency outside sewer agreement, which means I'm going to sign this to the Public Services Committee, then I'm going to recess the meeting. The Public Services Committee is going to meet. They're going to make a recommendation. We're going to come back into the meeting. We're going to open the city council back up. We're going to, if they approve it, we're going to approve it. And hopefully that won't be a problem for these folks and then we'll move on with our meeting. So with that, I'm going to refer this to the Public Services Committee and I'm going to recess the meeting for a few minutes while they handle their business and then we'll come back and we'll rejoin this meeting right after that. And with that, I'll turn it over to Dr. Rennie to have an emergency Public Services Committee meeting.
Dr. Rennie, would you like me to read the entitlement again?
In a moment.
Okay.
I will call the May twenty-second Special Services Committee meeting to order. Jennifer, would you please read our item of business?
Resolution, approving sanitary sewer service by outside user agreement for Myers and Austin ETAL for the property at thirty-seven thirty Rollin Street, Laramie County, Wyoming, located northwest of the intersection of Rollin Street and McCann Avenue.
Is there anyone here to give a staff report? Mr. Lloyd.
Mr. Chair members of the committee, my name is Seth Lloyd. I'm with the City of Cheyenne Planning and Development Department. This is an issue that came to our attention. As the mayor mentioned, the property is one hundred percent surrounded by the city limits. It is on our agenda to eventually annex this property as part of our county pocket annexations process. However, the property in question was half annexed a while ago, created two ownership parcels by the assessor. And then the property went into foreclosure and the new owners thought that the parcels were sellable separately and sold the properties off separately. And the new owner of the northern property destroyed a portion of the septic system for the house on the southern property and were ending up with a situation where the sewer is obviously not working on the property outside of city limits. Due to the nature of the proposal and the fact that the property is slated to be annexed and a different world may have already been annexed if we had done this as the first county pocket and we had known about this scenario. We recommend of this, recommend approval of this outside user agreement as specified in the resolution that is attached to the agenda. I would note that there is a reimbursement for infrastructure associated with this parcel. The city doesn't really have authority to waive this. It would only be able to be waived by the people who that infrastructure reimbursement is due to. So that is not something that we really can consider, but it is something that will be due when they connect to the infrastructure. So just, so everyone's aware of that scenario and the situation that causes. However, these other elements such as getting this done faster than a normal annexation, that is within. that is within our powers via this outside users agreement, then they can connect to the BOPU facilities in the area which are, uh, right there and available to be used. Um, I'm available for any questions from the committee.
Does the committee have any questions for Mr. Lloyd?
Mr. Chairman, through you.
Mr. Seagrave?
Uh, yes, Mr. Lloyd, you indicated that, that, uh, annexation, is that voluntary or will that be our, part of our pocket annexation?
Mr. Chair, we anticipate it being part of our, um, city-initiated pocket annexations.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Seagrave?
And where is this particular pocket on the overall list roughly?
Mr. Chair, I don't have a good handle as to what our overall list looks like with every pocket as, uh, in, in order. I do know that our next objective pocket that we already have a surveyor hired to do and should receive maps from in the near future is the northwest, um, pockets kind of around Vandahai and, um, Yellowstone, that area. Um, so it's not the next one on our list. However, I think that the sunny side areas is the next area after that. I don't know how many times, how many top pockets we'll have to annex at a time for that area.
Any, Mr. Labor, and any questions for Mr. Lloyd? Um, Mr. Seagrave, while we were talking, um, Director Bloom said that this will be probably after the city annexes here in the northwest, it'll be in the next area considered. Thank you, Mr. Lloyd. Mr. Strong, did you have any comments? I saw, I saw you getting up. Okay, all right. Committee, any other questions for staff? No. Jennifer, the hands raised, any, any public comment? I hardly see any public in the room at this point. Um, any public comment? Yes, ma'am. I'm Chelsea for the, you're gonna have to come up and speak on the microphone, so we have you for the record. Actually, you can just have Mr. White's seat. Now, you're in the seat of power.
Um, my name's Chelsea Myers. I am the owner of the property. So I just wanted to, um, say that I was here, I guess, and thank you for considering our predicament that we're in here. Um, the owner of the parcel to the north cut our septic pipes between the leach field and the septic tank about three or four months ago without letting us know he had done so. So between, uh, I guess it's between the beginning of April and now we've had to pump the septic now three times, um, at about six hundred dollars apiece. And this is all money that needs to go towards, uh, tapping into the city utilities. It's just a, a major expense. I have three children, um, a significant other and my grandfather living in my home. And this is a situation that we need to get rectified quickly, so.
I think you all have our sympathy. None of us want to be in that position. Committee members, do you have any, any questions for the owner? Thank you for being here.
Thank you.
I do have, um, perhaps Mr. Lloyd or Mr. Strong can answer this. I do have one other question, I guess. I'm assuming with the granting the outside users agreement, they'll have to sign the normal two oh one agreement saying they're eligible for annexation whenever the city's ready to annex.
Uh, yes, through you, sir. Um, as part of the outside user agreement includes the, the clause about annexation.
Thank you, Mr. Strong. All right. Hey, hearing any other public comment? Jennifer, anything, anybody online? All right. And hearing no other public comment, um, and we had our staff report, any discussion from the committee? It's true, thank you. May I have a motion? Motion by Mr. Labor and seconded by Mr. Seagrave. Any discussion? Discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye? The recommendation to the City Council will be to approve, having, this is the only item of business we have on our agenda, so we are adjourned.
All right, I'm gonna call the May twenty-second meeting of the governing body back to order, and, uh, if you would read in the number nineteen for us, please.
Resolution, approving sanitary sewer service by outside user agreement for Myers Esten, Austin et al. For the property at thirty-seven thirty Rollin Street, Laramie County, Wyoming, located northwest of the intersection of Rollin Street and McCann Avenue.
All right, we'll go out to the audience. You don't need to get up, ma'am, we heard you, so thank you so much. But is there anybody else in the audience want to speak to this outside users agreement? Hearing none. Dr. Rennie, we have a motion, please?
The Public Service Committee met on this item and their recommendation is to approve the outside user agreement, and I would so move.
Seconded by Mr. Seagrave. Comments from members of the governing body? All right, hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye?
Aye.
All right, those opposed? The outside user agreement is approved, and ma'am, we hope that this will get your family back to, uh, a healthy, safe place. Thank you.
Next item is number twenty-eight, pipeline easement agreement between the City of Cheyenne and Sampson Exploration LLC for installation and maintenance of pipelines on city-owned property.
All right, we'll go out to the audience. I know the, uh, the motion probably will be to postpone for two weeks, but let's go out to the audience and see, see if anybody wants to speak to this item. Hearing none. Mr. White?
Mr. Mayor, the recommendation of the Finance Committee is to approve, and I so move.
Second, seconded by Mr. Escabel.
Mr. Mayor, I move to postpone until the June twelfth, twenty twenty-three meeting of the governing body.
Second. It's been moved to postpone for two weeks, seconded by Mr. Escabel. Uh, we'll go back out to the audience. Anybody want to speak to the postponement? Hearing none. How about from the governing body? All right, hearing none. All those in favor of postponing for two weeks, please signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? The postponement is, um, or the agreement is postponed for two weeks.
Next item, twenty-four, a reappointment of John Edwards to the Board of Public Utilities.
All right, we have Mr. Edwards, who's a current member of the Board of Public Utilities, up for reappointment. I would entertain a motion. Mr. Seagrave and, uh, Dr. Rennie? All those in favor of the appointment, please signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Those opposed? The appointment is approved and the mayor does not vote on his own appointments.
Next item is twenty-four B, appointments of Merle Smith to the Public Transit Board and Heather Foster and Anthony Ortiz to the Tourism Promotion Joint Powers Board.
All right, we'd entertain motion on those appointments.
Second.
It's been moved by President Johnson and seconded by Mr. White? All those in favor of the appointments, please signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Those opposed? Those appointments are approved and we appreciate their willingness to serve.
Voucher report.
Is there anybody here in the audience want to speak to the vouchers? Hearing none. How about from the governing body? Next item, please.
Revenue report.
Anybody in the audience or the governing body want to speak to the revenue report? Good part is we have some. All right, hearing none. Next item, please.
Twenty-four E, announcement of a public hearing to be held June twelfth, twenty twenty-three at six P M. City Council Chambers, twenty-one oh one O'Neil Avenue, Cheyenne, Wyoming. Excuse me, and via electronic conference meeting for a retail liquor license application filed with the City Clerk's Office or Cheyenne Regional Airport Board doing businesses, Cloud Nine Restaurant and Bar, three hundred East Eighth Avenue, Cheyenne, Wyoming. Announcement of a public hearing to be held June twelfth, twenty twenty, twenty twenty-three at six P M. City Council Chambers, twenty-one oh one O'Neil Avenue, Cheyenne, Wyoming, and via electronic conference meeting to determine whether compliance of annexation congen- conditions required by Wyoming Statute fifteen dash one dash four oh two exists for about two point zero six acres of land located northwest of the intersection of Thomas Road and Ridge Road, Laramie County. Wyoming, announcement of a public hearing to be held June twelfth, twenty twenty-three at six P M. And City Council Chambers, twenty-one oh one O'Neil Avenue, Cheyenne, Wyoming, and via electronic conference meeting to determine whether compliance of annexation conditions required by Wyoming Statute fifteen dash one dash four oh two exists for about one point six nine acres of land located at forty-five twelve Rollin Street, Laramie County, Wyoming. Other business.
Right. Is there anybody in the audience want to speak to the governing body under other business? All right, hearing none. How about from the governing body? Mr. Johnson?
Um, I just wanted to actually, um, once again, I believe this was our thirteenth time doing, um, the rooted in Cheyenne planting. I've been asked when we were out in the hallway how many trees we planted. Um, this month, I believe so far, we've done about a hundred and sixty, um, right around, uh, Earth Day. Microsoft had actually supplied Root in Cheyenne with a grant, but they did, uh, sixty trees, uh, roughly around the Holiday Park area. So we've done two sessions this spring. And then this last Saturday, we, uh, did about another hundred in it. So once again, thank you to all the volunteers, all the sponsors, especially, um, urban forestry. I, I can't give them enough credit for the amount of work that they put in, uh, to this project strictly on the fact that they, you know, they make all the arrangements for the sightings so that we know we're not digging on sewer, water, electrical, fiber optic, whatever line that's in the ground, that those, uh, locations are done. Uh, they meet with the homeowners, they take on the applications, um, they work on their day off. They offer a ton of assistance either through the watering truck, just guidance to make sure we're actually planting in the right way. And so I'd really like to thank Urban Forestry for always, uh, helping us, all, all of us volunteers out, especially, you know, when we tick on new people. I know at Microsoft, we had, it was about fifty percent of new volunteers that stepped up to help out with the program. And then this last Saturday, I believe we had about another ten to fifteen people that had never planted before. So I really want to tell all the arborists in this town as well as Urban Forestry that we really do thank them for all their work and diversifying our urban canopy.
Anybody else in the governing body?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. White?
I just wanted to give a shout out to the volunteers and staff at the Cheyenne Depot Museum. Uh, they had depot days over the weekend, and, uh, my understanding is that close to a thousand people, uh, came out to, uh, get transported from, uh, the trolleys onto the U P property to tour the steam shop. Saw Mr. Labor and his wife. They caught the last trolley on Sunday. And, um, just the folks, just the look on the folks' faces when they get off that trolley after seeing that steam shop is fantastic. They're just so happy and, and amazed at, at what they've seen. So really want to thank U P for, uh, making that happen this weekend and the staff. And then, of course, visit Cheyenne who supplied the trolleys for the transportation. Great event.
Anybody else?
I was always happy to get off those trains, too.
All right, with that, hearing nothing else, we are adjourned for the evening. Thank you so much.